Welcome to the Westboro Select Board Meeting. Posted and called here is Detective Jean Kent. And being at six o'clock, I call the meeting by order and ask all those that are able to please stand and join in the public area. Thank you. First on our agenda is open forum. Is anybody here at open forum?
First is the walk party. This is held Friday, June 27th, 2:45 PM. Eighteen Commons, Central York Town Event. Two vendors, activity, space team, A-Rise, T-Rise, which is always a good night and it's good to be there. Yeah, for me, it's fun, but happy to be here. The second thing I just wanted to point out is one of the more change that we have been having with our public boards is that we need to be patient. Just urging anyone that uses our, any of our stations, to be kind, be polite, be welcoming, inviting. Really appreciate the enthusiasm that's coming in. Last thing is another recent trouble that the county feels with photo bodies, but I've sort of...
That I've addressed it and I don't foresee any further issues with them being cleaned moving forward. So I did want to just address that because I was made aware that maybe this board got some correspondence about that. So it has been addressed, it's been taken care of, and I'm fully confident that we won't have any issues moving forward through the summer.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Kevin Barry, eight Indian Pond Road. Quite frankly, I wasn't planning to make a presentation today, but much to my surprise, I received a notice of the mail yesterday with respect to a meeting, an onsite meeting with Meadow Road, and I'm assuming you are all aware of it.
Yep.
It was kind of confirmed today. It wasn't yesterday known as far as that goes, but confirmed via a second email today. So again, I think the content, timing, and quite frankly, the timing of it as far as a Tuesday at five o'clock is a little concerning for neighborhood residents and exclusivity or inclusivity where it's just three roads. I think it should be open to more people. If you don't mind, I've got a submission to make, but I'd like to make it public and kind of present it. I'm a little over three minutes, if that's okay, just give me a little bit of time, but I think it's directed more towards this and you'll understand why. I guess first, if you recall, at the April eighth Select Board meeting and during your discussions with respect to the B-Walt update presentation given by Jenny Jengris and Kristi Williams, it was understood at that point that at the request of residents and I think in agreement with all the board members, that the planning department would evaluate an alternate route and present its findings at a resident stakeholder meeting later in the summer. However, this letter suggests totally different. It totally contradicts that plan that was set forth, and quite frankly, it just lacks sufficient notice and convenience to the public. It's a week away and not exclusive of the entirety of the town who might be interested. Second, after reviewing the recording of the June third Planning Board meeting last week, I found no mention of this onsite meeting, nor was it included in Jenny's, Jenny Jengris' planning department updates. Yet, the resident letters were postmarked June seventh, four days later. That Planning Board meeting was only 27 minutes long. There was more than ample time to present this meeting to the board and more importantly, to make this information public. Would have given more than two weeks' notice. The omission further highlights our concerns about transparency, again, about this process. Third, there are numerous unresolved issues surrounding this project, including governance, the proposed route near the sewage treatment plants, and funding sources for Section One and Section Two. The question, the question of project ownership still remains unclear despite you regarding this as a Select Board goal for 2026, there really hasn't been any meaningful progress to move forward. Moving forward without clear leadership structure still raises concerns about this project. Additionally, at the February 28th Select Board meeting, the board explicitly stated that no further work should proceed beyond Section One, the Otis Route Nine intersection, the treatment plan board, I'm sorry, the treatment plan conflict and discussions and meetings there, and a survey for an alternate Meadow Root Road or Road Route. It was also decided that no easements should be pursued except in cases where they are voluntarily granted. However, despite these directives, the planning department is proceeding with this meeting at Meadow Road, further complicating an already unsettled process. Lastly, I want to circle back to that April eighth Select Board presentation by Jenny Jengris and Kristi Williams. There was significant discussion about the treatment plan conflict, Meadow Road, and the possible alternate route through West Meadow Plaza. However, as the Select Board, as you discussed this at length and offered opinions and direct questions, what was not disclosed at that time was that on March 26th, a week before, the new owners of West Meadow Plaza had already informed the planning department, Jenny Jengris and Kristen Bellinger, that they did not support this route to their property and would not grant an easement. Okay, so let this sink in. That presentation was an hour and 10 minutes. Thirty minutes of that was discussing Meadow Road and West Meadow Plaza. There were direct questions to the planning director about West Meadow Plaza, and it was not mentioned at any point in time that the owners were not going to support this route. I'd be pissed. I am pissed about that. Fundamental decisions regarding project oversight remain unresolved. Until the town formally determines leadership and direction, moving ahead with discussions on specific routes and easements is premature and lacks transparency. I urge the Select Board to ensure transparency, proper notification, and a thorough resolution of outstanding concerns before moving forward with decisions that are affecting residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything, anybody else for open forum? Great, thank you. We do a public hearing posted for 6:10, I see it being 6:08.
This won't help you, but we don't have any interdepartmental transfers.
I was going to ask that.
We could, do you, do you want to do 13?
Sure. So we'll jump to item 13, which this is a request to amend the purchase and sale agreement for the Ellis Walker property acquisition at Zero Bowman Street. And so it's conservation directive, but we're not, she's not...
She's not coming.
Coming because of the change here. Just a note, I am going to recuse myself from this discussion based on my relation, family relationship to the Walker family. Turn it to Select Board Member Kia to take charge.
Thank you very much, Ian. And with that, I think I'll pass it to Kristi.
Okay. So simply the purchase and sale agreement that was previously executed had a closing date of June 2nd. We're beyond that date, but we're continuing to do due diligence, working with the property owners. And so we're just requesting at this point that the board authorize an extension of the purchase and sale agreement to August 28th, and then further to authorize me to execute that agreement once it's completed in order to memorialize that extension.
Okay, any questions from anyone?
Can I just, sorry, I should have added that related to the grant that we had applied for, we have received an extension on the grant, and so we're still within that ability to use the grant for the purchase.
Thank you. I will move to extend the closing date under the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of the Walker property to August 28th, 2025, and to authorize the town manager to execute an amendment to memorialize said extension. Second, thank you. Just the three of us now, so we can do a hand vote. All those in favor? Three, zero, one abstain. Okay.
Perfect.
Ian, back to you.
Thank you. And I actually was, I should have noted that this was a, or is a hybrid, posted hybrid meeting, and as such, and I apologize for not doing this at the beginning of a meeting, but I will do it now, that pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, which is an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, this meeting is being conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body, as well as members of the public, may access this meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the location listed at the top of our agenda, and it is possible that all members of the public body may attend remotely, although we're not, with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. The meeting may be accessed remotely via the Zoom link that was posted on the agenda on the town's website. And are required by law or allowed by the chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so by in-person attendance or by accessing their meeting remotely, as noted above on the agenda. Additionally, the meeting will be broadcast live in real time via Verizon Channel 28 and Charter Channel 192, or via Westboro TV's online platforms at westbrotv.org and youtube.com/westbrotv. Thank you, and again, apologies for not starting the meeting with that announcement. Okay, so next, being past 6:10, which is the advertised time for this public hearing, I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing, which, to cover the request of Chill Kitchen and Bar West, Inc., for a new Section 12 All Alcohol License at 32A Lyman Street, Suite Number 750.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Since our member, remote member's not on yet, all those in favor? It's four to zero, the public hearing is opened. I think we have...
Thank you.
Yep. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is John Logamassini. I'm the owner of Chill Kitchen and Bar in Marlboro, and I'm here to apply for an All Alcohol license for a location I'd like to open up here in Westboro.
Great. We're excited about that. Do you want to, I mean, this is an opportunity, you're in front of us, but maybe to a little bit advertise Chill Kitchen and Bar, and actually maybe talk about the location. We know what it is, but for the public that is watching.
Well, we are a family-run company. I've been in the business for 43 years. My daughter's involved in the business, my wife's involved in the business, my son is involved in the business, so it is, it's a nice family business. We serve all American fare comfort food, some of it with a little twist, and then we also do experiment with some different types of cuisine, as our features are specials, but we do have a staple menu of comfort food. We do do brunch, typically do brunch on Saturdays and Sundays. We serve a lot of craft cocktails, and we are looking to, hopefully have a private dining area as well, and we're looking forward to servicing the Westboro area.
Great. And so just to note, the location that you're moving into is at 32 Lyman Street, which was formerly the Mexicali Restaurant, prior to that Ruby Tuesday, so...
Yes.
Adjacent to Julio's Liquors there. So, great, I will turn to the board for any questions or comments.
I haven't had the chance to eat in Marlboro, but my wife has, and she enjoyed it, so I am eager and ready, and I'm just curious what timeframe.
That's great, thank you.
Do you, do you have a timeframe for planning?
Well, we're hoping if we get this going, late September, early October.
Awesome. Thanks. Patrick?
Sure, I'll just say, welcome to the town, looking forward to it. I live a very short distance from there, so while I'm excited about it, I'm not excited about my waistline getting any visitor figure, but I certainly will enjoy your restaurant if I can.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, and welcoming into the town.
Thank you so much. Look forward to being a part of the community.
So I'm moved to approve the Section 12 All Alcohol Liquor License for Chill Kitchen and Bar West, Inc., DBA Chill Kitchen and Bar at 32 Lyman Street, naming John Logamassini...
Logamassini.
Oh, there, okay. As the manager of record.
Seconded. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Oh, wait, it is a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, public comment, yes. Thank you for that.
You're out of practice.
Yeah. Kevin Barry, eight Indian Pond Road. I'm here for another topic. He doesn't know, he didn't know I was going to be here, actually. I've known John for a number of different, number of years. Although not at the same time, we both worked for probably at that point the premier seafood restaurant company in the East Coast, if not the country, Legal Seafoods. I think I was down in DC probably when he first started. But long story short, I've gotten to know him through my other company that I worked for, Wine and Spirits Industry. I was pleasantly surprised to see this on the agenda. I can't speak more highly for a family-run business, more professional, buttoned up, community-involved, solid, and I think plain and simple is, in the restaurant industry right now, you don't see people expanding, especially the single-unit operators. So a testament to his financial prowess and his business operation and his model that they're expanding, and I can testify the fact that years ago, I drove all over the state, so I knew restaurants going in and out, and properties coming up. I also, I think I've mentioned to him a couple different places years ago that were available here. It wasn't the right time, it didn't work out, but for this to pop up, I couldn't be more supportive, and the fact that he chose Westboro, obviously, he sees the potential here, and the, and the, the location should be great for him. So again, you're making a great choice, it's a win-win situation for everybody, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Hey, thank you for that.
We've never actually gotten a comment.
I know, that's great. Okay, we have the motion and seconded, all those in favor? That's four to zero, four being present. Welcome to Westboro. I always end with this, so just bear with me, because I know you've run a restaurant for a long time, but as you probably know, and for folks in Westboro that wrote, that know right now, that our police department is doing a, a campaign around town, just to make sure that all of our businesses are properly following the laws. We take it seriously here in Westboro. We love to give these liquor licenses out, love to see businesses in town. We don't like to see them come back because of violations, so, and you don't want to be back here either, so. I always, I always say that out there, but it is something that we're pleased to do this, we're pleased that you're coming to Westboro, we look forward to you being in the community and, and frequenting your restaurant along with our fellow Westboro residents, but also people from the area. So best of luck, and we look forward to you opening as soon as possible.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? Four to zero, four being present.
Do you want to do the appointments?
Yeah, why don't we move to item 12, just because we're ahead of time for the next three items. So this is item 12, the request for new appointments and reappointments to boards, committees, commissions, positions. This is a standard process that we have towards the end of June, when a lot of our appointments become renewable. We do have a long list here, there are some that have unique terms, so we are going to go through them, you know, based on the list, just to highlight for folks listening, so people aren't confused. Typically, our appointments run based on our fiscal year, which is July 1st to June 30th. However, the, some exceptions, the treatment plan board has terms that are three years, but those run September 1st to August 31st. The Affordable Housing Trust terms are for two years, following the fiscal year calendar. Appointees as representatives to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, or CMRPC, are for one year, following the fiscal year calendar. Veterans Advisory Board terms are for one year, following the fiscal year calendar. And then finally, registrar voters' terms are for three years, and those are from April 1st to March 31st. And please don't ask me why there are differences there, but I just wanted to highlight that there are differences. So...
So you'd like a motion...
So you'd like a motion?
I'd like a motion, and then to read down, I think we should read down through the whole list.
Okay, I can do that unless anybody else, I'll volunteer.
Yep.
Go right ahead.
Take a swig of water here. Anyway, I'll move to appoint or reappoint members to the specific board for term length and expiration date as follows. Ed Bane, reappointment, Affordable Housing Trust, two years, term expiration June thirtieth to twenty twenty-seven. Roberta Brown, reappointment, Spirit Committee, three years, term expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Daniel Berger, reappointment, Open Space Preservation, three years, term expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Thomas Burke, reappointment, Wastewater Treatment Plant, three years, term expiration August thirty-first twenty twenty-eight. Colleen Dowd, reappointment, Recreation Commitment, three years, Recreation Commission, three years, term expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Peter Dumbeck, reappointment, Sustainable Westboro, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Alan Edinburgh, reappointment, Affordable Housing Trust, two years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-seven. Islam Alaban, reappointment, Economic Development, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Michelle French, reappointment, Cultural Council, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. John Gallinow, Veterans Advisory Board, one year, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Jeanne Grandfield, reappointment, Active Trades Preservation Safety Committee, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Ellen Google, reappointment, Activity, Active Transportation and Safety Committee, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Christian Hedrick, reappointment, Historical Commission, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Steve Herrera, reappointment, Affordable Housing Trust, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Paul Horrigan, reappointment, Veterans Advisory Board, one year, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Justin Lundberg, reappointment, Conservation Commission, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Justin Lundberg, reappointment, Zonium Board of Appeals, three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Daniel Marr, new appointment, Economic Development, term three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Phil Migdal, reappointment, Historical Commission, term three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Marjorie Peers, reappointment, Historical Commission, term three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Anthony Pittman, reappointment, Veterans Advisory Board, one year, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Marshall Preston, reappointment, Veterans Advisory Board, one year, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Daniel Scher, reappoint, Central Mass Regional Planning, term one year, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Teresa Spadford.
Spadfor.
Spadfor, sorry, Spadfora, Cultural Council, term three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Kate Storm, reappointment, Youth Commission, three years, expiration six, June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. Andy Turrock, reappointment, Veterans Advisory Board, term one year, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Al Turnus, reappointment, Veterans Advisory Board, one year, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Sally Ward, reappointment, Registrar Voters, three years, expiration March thirty-first twenty twenty-eight. Robert, Robert E. Washburn, Council on Aging, reappointment, term three years, expiration June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for volunteering. I know this is an illustrious list of well-known people to town, but just to be clear, if you go to the town website and look at for committee vacancies, there are a lot of vacancies, and if anybody out there wishes to volunteer, it'd be nice to see all these boards fill up and have full quorum, so I encourage you to get involved.
Thank you. Anything else further? Not all those in favor? Four to zero, four being present, I would just echo what Mark said, congratulations to these folks that have been appointed or reappointed, they will get notices, remind them that they do need to go and get sworn in in the town clerk's office, and also to ensure that they do their open meeting law training, which is important for all of us to do, but also to look at our committee handbook, which we spend a lot of time on, hope that all of them take the time to look through that, just so we ensure that we are running all of our committees in the fashion that they're meant to be run, so look forward to all of those folks continuing their service or beginning their service with the town. Okay, we're at six twenty-five. So item three on the agenda, three, four, and five are a number of Class One Dealers' License. Do we have folks here, or are they, yep, perfect. Thank you for being here.
First one's ten minutes.
Okay, so item three, we'll do the first one, which is a request of Asbury Westboro FLLC, doing business as Herb Chambers Ford Westboro at 310 Turnpike Road for a Class One Dealers' License.
Good evening, everyone. Devin Bodie, I'm counsel for Asbury Automotive Group. Really what we're looking for tonight is just approval on our Class One application, this is for the Ford dealership that's currently owned and operated by Herb Chambers, Asbury is going to be coming in, purchasing this dealership, as well as many of the Chambers dealerships in the state, and we're just looking to make sure that the license is in place so that when this deal closes, that everyone can keep their jobs and we can continue to operate business as usual.
Great, and I think an hard note here is this one, so it looks like you're still working on the manufacturers agreement with Ford?
Yes, I believe that that applies to all, and we can address that individually to the extent needed, but we do still need the dealer agreements with the manufacturers, and we, we are fully aware that you will not turn over the licenses to us until we provide that, so I just ask that approval be conditional upon us providing the dealer agreements to the town.
That contingency is in each of the motions.
Yep.
For each of these.
Okay. Great, and Christine, it's going to look to you, because you mentioned this one was for ten minutes or anything.
I misspoke, because I was thinking it was a public hearing.
Okay, perfect. So here's three agenda items, so I think, I guess we'll do them each individually, if folks want, does that work?
Sure.
Or do we want to do them all together? We can do them all together, too, so.
I can put them right together, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, so why don't you hit, if you're okay, why don't you hit the other two, and we'll do all the motions together.
Absolutely. For the Infiniti and the Lincoln dealerships, it's the exact same thing, we're just looking for approval on our Class One Dealer applications that have been submitted to the town, no changes on these dealerships as well, we're looking to keep the facilities exactly the same, keep management in place and staff in place to the extent that they wish to stay.
Perfect, and I think just to note on our agenda, item four for the Infiniti, it lists three ten, I think it's actually three twelve, Turnpike, that's what's in the motion, that's what's in the motion, yeah, so the Ford's at three ten, Infiniti's at three twelve, just want to make sure that's correct in our motion.
Was there a typographical error in?
On our agenda, not.
Okay. I have three ten for Ford and three twelve for Infiniti as well.
Yeah, and that's what it's in our, that's, that will be in our motion, it's just, just so the public, what's on the agenda was misprinted, it is, the Infiniti is at three twelve Turnpike Road. Okay.
Make a motion.
Sure.
Do we have a chance to ask questions?
Yep, let's make a motion and.
Okay.
And we'll go through questions.
Okay. Okay. I'll move to approve the Class One Auto Dealers' License for Asbury Westboro FLLC, DBA Herb Chambers Ford, Westboro at 310 Turnpike Road, with the following conditions and restrictions. Automobiles will be parked in accordance with the site plan submitted with the application, which allows for up to ninety-one customer slash employee vehicles, forty-eight display vehicles, and two, three hundred and twenty-six storage vehicles, and to release the liquor, the license contingent on the town receiving a fully executed manufacturers agreement. I further move to approve the Class One Auto Dealers' License for Asbury IN LLC, DBA Herb Chambers Infiniti, Westboro at 312 Turnpike Road, with the following conditions and restrictions. Automobiles will be parked in accordance with the site plan submitted with the application, which allows for up to sixty-eight customer vehicles, thirty-five employee vehicles, sixty display vehicles, and twenty-one storage vehicles, and to release the license contingent on the town receiving the fully executed manufacturers agreement. I further move to approve the Class One Auto Dealer License for Asbury Norwood LNC LLC, doing business as Herb Chambers Lincoln Westboro at 75 Otis Street, with the following conditions and restrictions. Automobiles will be parked in accordance with the site plan submitted with the application, which allows for up to one hundred and eighteen customer slash employee vehicles, twenty display vehicles, and two hundred and ninety storage vehicles, and to release the license contingent on the town receiving a fully executed manufacturers agreement.
Seconded. Okay, moved and seconded, now for any comments or questions, Mark?
So my comment, I have a comment and a question, and it's not necessarily related to the motion, which is why I was trying to get it in ahead, but I can, the, the fee for this is a hundred dollars each, and I think that's extraordinarily low for an enterprise of this size, and I think we should look at that fee as possibly, you know, again, this is a transition from one corporation to another, so I, and it's obviously too late to do anything about it now, but in the future, we might want to revisit that. And then also for the applicant, my question is, I don't know if you're aware of the impending or hopefully impending redesign of Otis and Route Nine, and it's a big project that will hopefully improve that intersection, and if you're interested in that project or if your bosses are interested in that project, now is probably the time to engage with the town on it before, you know, again, it's, we're just trying to welcome you to town.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
You know, there's only so much input we can give you, but we certainly want you to be aware of what's going to happen there.
Yes, and I know Mr. Chambers was very involved in the community, and Asbury is looking to be very involved in the community as well, is there anywhere that I could get more information on this project?
Sure, I'll let Christine.
Actually, our community development director is right back there, this if you want to chat with him on your way out.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah, it's a big project that the state's involved with, but also, as you know, probably across the street from there is the whole Amazon, three Amazon buildings, they're very involved through their, the property management company, so it's a big thing, it's going to actually improve it, it is a tough intersection, we're hopeful that will help all the businesses there, including yours, so.
Absolutely, and I will.
I'm just eager to get your input on how we can minimize any impacts on your.
Absolutely, and I will bring that back to the Asbury team and as well as the Chambers team to see what input they have based on their experience in town.
Yeah, I'm sure the Chambers team has been well aware of it, because there's been a lot of information, but just as you guys come in, and thanks, Mark, for bringing that up.
Sure, I appreciate heads up.
Any other comments or questions?
No, spot on, Mark.
No, I, I, I think just one comment, for, I think for the public, just Asbury Automotive Group is a significant automotive group, I, before this, I was not aware of what, a hundred and fifty-three dealership locations across fourteen states, so I don't know if you're elsewhere in Massachusetts.
No, this is the first time that Asbury is coming to Massachusetts, it is one of the largest automotive retailers in the country, they're a publicly traded company, they're on the NASDAQ, so this is a big change for the, from Chambers to Asbury, but for all intensive purposes, it, the culture is exactly the same, they run it like a family-owned business, and they're based out of Georgia, but they will be relying on local management, local expertise to really operate these dealerships, so if you know anybody at the Chambers dealerships, if you know any of the managers, like, more likely than not, they will be staying on board, that's their decision as to whether they want to stay or not, but yes, it is a substantial change.
Yeah, we'll welcome to Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Great, anything else? If not, all those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present, so we look forward to you getting your manufacturers agreements, and then we will get that all released, so thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we have the electric vehicle charging stations and sustainability updates with our town sustainability coordinator.
Hi, everybody, Ben Bauer, Sustainability Coordinator.
Thank you for being here.
So, I'm here just to give you guys kind of an update on some of the grant projects that I've been working on, I have two grants that were received in the fall of 2024, and we've had some progress on them in the past couple months. So to start off, the Westboro EV charging feasibility study, the purpose of this grant was to assess opportunities to expand EV charging infrastructure townwide, both on municipal properties and commercial properties. We have done, to date, twenty-nine sites that have been evaluated, twenty-one of these have been municipal locations, and eight of them have been commercial properties. I think in your guys' packets, you should have a detailed list of all the properties that were selected for this, for this study. The lead consultant for this project is Power Options, and the subcontractor doing the site assessments was BT2, BT2 Energy, and this was funded through the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, which was provided by the Department of Energy Resources. So again, completed all of the site visits up to date at all twenty-nine locations, coordinated all the private sites with the commercial property owners, and got approval from them, and right now, we're at a point where Power Options is drafting the feasibility roadmap, and we're expecting to get the first draft of this on June twenty-third. So I've also provided you guys with the full scope of work, so I'm not going to read through every single one of these, but a general overview of this project is to get a detailed guidance document for each individual location with maps and charging, you know, locations, how many chargers, speeds, ports that there would be most feasible at each location, they're also going to identify which locations are the most cost-effective in town, from kind of least to most. We provided them with a lot of, you know, traffic studies and data for them to review while they're building out this roadmap to optimize where the best locations would be. And then lastly, just giving some additional updates, not related to the EV charging, but we have recently completed green communities-funded energy upgrades, both at this building in Town Hall and the Forbes Municipal Building. We are currently just waiting some invoices to wrap up both of those grants. We have also completed a project with Westboro Public Schools to do LED lighting at Hastings Elementary School and have converted all of the lighting there to LEDs. We've also worked with the DPW to install two new dual-port EV charging stations at the DPW facility for new fleet vehicles that we have acquired, and then we also have a recycling collection event sponsored by Mass Save on June twenty-first from nine AM to twelve PM at the senior center parking lot. And that's all I have for you guys for today.
Great, I will open up for questions for folks.
If I can, as the representative of Sustainable Westboro, I just want to thank Ben for the work on this, it's a tremendous amount of work, he presented this, he presents very thorough reports to Sustainable Westboro at our meetings, and as you can see, there's been a tremendous amount of project and, excuse me, progress in these, on these projects, so thank you, Ben, for doing that work, and I certainly look forward to these continuing to move on and the results of them, so thank you.
Thank you.
So the twenty-nine sites assessed, and there were what, a five-to-ten-year roadmap, would you estimate how many of these sites you would actually, at the end of this, end up installing at, would it be all of them, a subset of them?
So some of the locations, so I would say to start, municipal facilities would probably be the top priority, definitely ones that are going to house EV vehicles possibly in the future, so places like the Town Hall here, Forbes Municipal Building, I could see as high feasible locations, and then on the school side, depending on kind of what the school committee and their decisions are, those are also very feasible locations for both public and fleet charging, so for people working at the buildings, the buildings there, and for buildings like Fails, there's already conduit support. Um, and for buildings like Fails, there's already conduits pulled out to some of the spots, so. I would say, um, prioritizing municipal facilities, and then depending on. What the uptake of residents and E Vs are, um, then we could look at more of the, the public locations.
So this, this assessment was grant-funded, so then as determinations were made going forward, we would go for additional grants to sort of implement? Is that how this might work?
Yep, so, um, both utility rebates and incentives, um, are, there's a lot of programs right now running for E V chargers. Specifically for the Green Communities Program we're a part of. Um, you are allowed to apply for E V chargers, but it has to be. Um, kind of hand-in-hand with the acquisition of a new E V vehicle. Um, so with the new acquisition of E V vehicles. Um, facilities like this would be applicable for green communities. Um. And then also the, the grant that funded this study would also be another grant we could go for to, um, purchase chargers.
And it looked like in the scope of work that the, coming in this initial assessment, they're all, they're looking at that as well as, uh, recommendations on various grants to.
Correct. Yep, so there'll be a table of all the available incentives and grants that we could apply for, uh, moving forward.
I just had a quick follow-up question to Sean's question, if I can. Um, so, um, Ben, knowing that we are currently actively working towards climate leadership adoption. Um, which is kind of like the next step of green communities, um, are you aware of, uh, uh, will that make us eligible for any additional grants that would also support these efforts as well? Um, or is that just, do you anticipate that those will still fall underneath the green communities?
Yeah, so both with, um, green communities, we are allowed to, even though we are pursuing, uh, climate leaders, we can apply for, for grants with the Green Communities Program. Um, but if we are to become a climate leader, um, through the D O E R program, there'll be a much larger fund. Of grants that we can apply for, up to a million dollars, um, for energy efficiency projects.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I just had a little bit of a question. I, I understand that the grant funded the feasibility study and. Uh, we had twenty-one municipal locations and eight private locations. Is the intent? For grants to fund E V charging on private property or just on the municipal sites? And if it is. How were these eight chosen over other private property that, you know, maybe just as worthy?
Yeah, so, um, for the, the eight selected, I mean, to kind of go back in how we got all of these locations, I worked with, um, Pam from I T. To get all of the parking availability, um, in the town and kind of went down the list to, to pick out the most feasible locations. Um, there's some parking in town that just would not make sense in general, um, and that kind of left us with twenty-one. And the grant funding up to twenty-nine, we figured it would be, um, a good incentive to work with, um. Community businesses to, um, give them a guidance document for if they would like to, to implement them, so. The purpose is not for us to fund E V charger on these locations, but as a guidance document to kind of incent, incentivize these, um. Public properties to implement E V chargers.
The private properties that.
The private properties, yeah.
Okay, got it.
And we did work with, um, different departments to create a, a really large list and kind of narrowed down to. Um, a list of about sixteen, uh, commercial properties, and then the ones who ended up wanting to participate, um, just based off of feedback. Was how we ended up with those eight selected.
Okay, that's fine.
Sean, you have another question?
Oh, um, yes, you also mentioned the, uh, recycling event coming up. Let me get back to that, and I, I believe it was the same event I attended last year at the Senior Center. They take computers, they take printers, take everything. There is a cost for certain recycling items. I guess where could folks find out more about that recycling event?
Ask my questions.
Yeah, so there, uh, there will be a mailer going out to, to all residents in town, um, for, for all the products that they can recycle. I also do plan on doing some. Public announcements on social media, um, highlighting all of the things that people can bring there. Um, one of the, the big programs that they run during this event is dehumidifiers, which you can. Drop off and receive, um, a rebate certificate to buy a new, more energy-efficient, uh, dehumidifier for your home.
Thank you. Even if you have one that's like thirty-five, forty years old?
Yep.
Wow, get rid of that monster.
So I actually got the mailer in my mail already, and I was interested too that there is an option. Um, where a truck will, for a fee, obviously, will come and pick up. Like a larger appliance, I, I believe that's true, and you can confirm that for me, but I was excited for that because I have an old fridge in my basement that I've been dying to get rid of, so.
That's great. I just, I, I was going to ask the same question Sean did, because I think it's, uh, getting that out there, I think it's a great. Piece for the community to get involved in and, uh, hopeful folks, uh, participate in that, so great to get that information out as many ways as possible.
Yeah, definitely.
Great, any other questions? Ben, thank you very much for being here, giving us that update, and, uh, hopefully. We'll, uh, see some of those charging stations coming and, uh, also have a successful recycling event.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Ben.
Okay, moving forward, item seven on the agenda, and we're ahead of schedule here, but I know the agenda's here. This is the Dog Park Opening and Regulations Discussion.
Hi, um, I'm Jen Kirkland, uh, Recreation Director, here to just go over, um, where we're at with the Dog Park and to mainly review the policies that, um. We've come up with, uh, for the park. So the park, uh, is complete, uh, it is fully ready to go. Um, it's beautiful. I have some pictures within this presentation. Um, so I don't know if you have the latest version of the poli- do, okay, great.
So it was sent out in the latest version of your packet and also sent via email.
I have copies if, and people want them, but, um, I won't read all of this, um, but. Um, these regulations were put together between myself, our, um, Fields Manager, Kim, um. Our Dog Officer, um, Melinda, and Town Council did also have a chance to review them, so I think it's a pretty com- and our Rec Commission also, um, had a chance to see this as well. So I think it's a pretty comprehensive policy. Um, that the intent is to just keep everybody, animals and owners, safe. So, um, the park will be open dawn to dusk. Uh, we won't be opening and closing the gate. I think if we look at this through the lenses, this is really a playground for dogs, so we don't open and close our playgrounds daily. They're just, they're open and. We have signs up that the playgrounds are open dawn to dusk, so this park will operate similarly. Um, park is used at your own risk. Um, we're limiting, uh, people to enter the park with three dogs per owner, and we got to that number because anything over three dogs, you are required to have a kennel license. So we felt like three dogs made, made a lot of sense. Um, the park is, uh, only intended for use of. Owners or handlers and dogs. No other animals should be allowed, uh, on the premises. Dogs must be licensed, um, dogs must be leashed as they enter and leave the park. Um, just trying to think of, uh, kids under the age of fifteen must be accompanied by an adult. Um, any bites should be reported to the animal inspector immediately, and there'll be signage up with phone, appropriate phone numbers. Um, and we, we do have the right to close the park if we need to do maintenance, or if there's any inclement weather. Our plan for right now is, you know. Basically, the first significant snowfall, we'll close the park, but if we have a mild winter, there's no reason why we couldn't, we couldn't keep it open. So just some things that are not allowed in the park, human food, dog food, dog treats. Um, dogs with any diseases or dogs that are in heat, and any puppies that are under four months old. Um, obviously no smoking, alcohol, or glass containers. Um, Town Council added this little bit that I thought was good. Um, this will be on signage as well, that, um, any user of the park needs to comply with the Westboro Animal Control Bylaw. Um, in addition to these rules and regulations. So all of this will be on a sign that is posted at the park. Uh, it'll be on our website. I'm sure it'll be on the town's website. Um. And then there'll be, um, additional signs, so that will be one pretty large sign, and then we'll have a sign for a small dog area to indicate where that is. Uh, and a large dog area, even though it is pretty obvious, but we just want to make sure people understand, and then we'll have a separate sign to remind people that dogs should be leashed when they're entering and leaving, leaving the park. And these are just some pictures of how, what the park looks like. I don't feel like these do it justice. It's beautiful. Um, the construction fence is still up until we're ready to open. Um, and I anticipate, uh, after tonight, and after I have, we get approval for these policies, we'll open, um, I'll be able to have signs. Probably within a week and a half, so I'm saying within two weeks, we should be able to have an opening. And I think we're going to refrain from a big grand opening, just because I don't know. Uh, how it would go if everyone just all showed up at once with all of their dogs, so we'll have a soft opening, um, and make sure people know that when we open. Happy to take any questions or if I missed anything.
I was down there this weekend, and it does, it looks fabulous. It's, uh, it's beautiful. Um, great work down there. You guys, by the contractors, so looking forward to it. But I'll open up to the board for any questions. Let's start on this end.
I'm excited for it. I, uh, I'll be over there tomorrow if I could, but, um. I did have one question on the dogs must be licensed and wear current rabies and license tags. Um, I don't know, and I've never really looked at other dogs to see if they're wearing two tags, but I know my dog. Only wears the license, and to the best of my knowledge. You'd have to have current rabies in order to get a license, so I'm just wondering, do I need to go searching for that rabies, or is that really necessary?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, good to know. I, uh.
You do get that when you get your, taped to your rabies license.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I'm sure it's in the house somewhere.
Yeah.
Mark, thanks for asking.
Go find it now.
Thanks for the wrong answer.
Anything else? Sean, anything?
Um, uh, this looks great. Thank you very much for all your work on this, Jen.
Thank you.
So I think you mentioned that, that, of course, folks need to pick up after their dogs within the park. And I don't know that necessarily people should expect bags to be provided.
There are bags, and there's a bag dispenser, and bags will be provided.
Okay, but I guess folks don't assume that it's, somebody's going to be always.
Yeah, I mean, people.
As conscientious as we're going to be.
Yeah, it'd be good if you kept, carried your own, just in case.
That's actually one of the regulations, is to have, to bring an adequate number of bags.
Excellent. Will there be a trash container there?
Yes, yep, there's trash there, yep.
Terrific, yeah, very excited. Thank you very much.
Just to follow on that, so with the trash, is that coordinated with the D P W to pick it up?
Yep, they'll pick it up regularly, um, like they do any of our other parks, yeah.
Perfect. Sorry to jump in.
No, 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 um, so, yeah, no, thank you, Jen, very much for the, you and the, uh, Rec Commission working on this, um. As the liaison to the Rec Commission over the last month or two, I've learned more about this and had the presentation last week, so thank you for you and the team doing that work. Um, and getting us to this point. I did have a couple of questions. I did submit a few questions, uh, via email, but it looks like a lot of those were addressed, so I think I'll just try to. Key on, uh, the couple of ones that, ones I have. Uh, it mentions that the park will be subject to closure during inclement weather, or for maintenance. Is the expectation that the park will be open three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so holidays would still be available for people, so they can go down on Christmas or New Year's or whatever.
Same with playgrounds, yeah.
Okay. Um, do we anticipate, and I, I think you said something about signage, will this actually be a part of the signage? Okay.
Hmm.
And, um, will, um, non-residents of Westboro be welcomed to the park as well?
Yeah, um, because of the way this was funded, as you're all aware, we received the Stanton Foundation grant. We also used some ARPA funds, but we. Because a significant portion of this was funded through the grant, we can't restrict to just Westboro residents, but, so it's open to anybody.
That's what I thought. I, thank you for the clarity there. Uh, I would just suggest that we put something on here that states that. Um, in lieu of the recent, um, uh, issue that we were made aware of at the pickleball courts. Um, I, I don't want, I, I don't want there to be any question by residents in Westboro saying, no, this is only a Westboro park. This is. It is intended to be open for all, uh, all that would like to be there, so that would be something I would look for, is just some clarity on that, so everybody is aware that all are welcome. I think that was it. So thank you very much, and look forward to it.
Great. Um, I just had a couple of questions. Um, well, I know that there was discussion, so I haven't been over there. I saw it from the outside, but it was fenced off. I didn't climb the fence.
Thank you for not doing that yet.
Unlike the state hospitals.
I would like a picture of that.
But, yeah. Um, but, um, I think there's water there, is that correct? And if so, is it in each of the small dog park, or how is the water?
So it's when you go in, there's a water fountain for adults, and then there's a little one for dogs.
Perfect. Great. Um. And then. The leash, can you just kind of explain how, is there like, as you come in with a leash, is there like a.
Yep.
Area where you close one gate and the other gate opens, or are you in and then?
So it's double gated, so you'll enter into sort of like foyer, I guess, um, and then there'll, there's a leash, um, hanger that we have there, so you can hang a leash there if you want. And then that's where the water fountain is, that's where the trash is, it's where a lot of the signage will be posted, and then you can either go to the right to go to the small dog area, or to the left is the large dog area, and then you'll be separated, so it's double entry.
Great.
Yeah. And we do have benches too. I don't know, I think that might have come up in an email or something, but the bed, we do have plenty of seating in there as well.
That's great.
That is a question I was asking.
Um, final question is, um, on behalf of my wife, and she probably already knows it, but, um, is there a Friends of the Dog Park created yet, or?
Not yet, no.
But you're looking for active users to create one, is that correct?
This board created a gift fund, so we do have that set up, um, and someone else was actually in my office, um, asking about that as well, so it sounds like there could be interest, but nothing's formal yet.
Yep, because I know, I know there were cuts that we had to make in terms of some of the things we wanted, just because of funding, in terms of some shade covering, some.
Dog features.
Dog features, yeah.
Yeah.
Playground features for dogs, but, so just to, to the public, that there will be, um, the opportunity for folks if they want to donate to help.
Well, so there's two separate things. So there's a gift account that people can donate to if they're interested, if people want to set up a separate friends group.
They could do that as well.
Separate from the town, so Jen's not organizing that.
Thank you. Yep, but there is, if someone just wanted to give today, there is a gift account already.
Yep, there is, yep.
Perfect. Great.
Ian.
Yes.
I would, I don't know if you noticed that Shelby's on.
Oh.
And I do have another question.
Okay. Hey, Shelby. Um, do you have questions, Shelby? Thanks for joining.
Um, I'm going to assume you guys have covered it based on the questions that were just asked, and the memo that Jen provided in our packet was quite thorough, so I think I'm all set. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
I, I just had a follow-up then, Ian, on Patrick's question. If, if we're going to add something about this being open to everyone. Um, could we also add that, you know, some, some kind of, I don't know, maybe you've already thought of this, but some kind of credit to the Stanton Foundation?
Oh, we have to do that, yep. Well, that, I'm sorry, there'll be, actually be six signs, so something that says it was funded by Stanton.
Okay, I just wasn't clear if that was done already.
Thank you.
So you looking for us to appro-
I'm sorry, you know what, I did, uh, I'm sorry, the memo that, or the regulations, um, how are those going to be posted? I apologize if you guys covered that.
Yep.
They'll be on a sign, um, outside the park, and, uh, they'll be on our website, the town's website, um. Wherever we can post them, we'll put them, but they'll definitely be at the park on a sign.
Okay. Uh, because this looks like, like, uh, two pages, so is it going to be on a, like, a, like a pretty big sign, Jen?
It'll be big, yeah. I spoke with, um, the vendor today, and, um, he's working on a few mock-ups for me, um. But I think we can get it all into one sign. It'll be a, a big sign, but, um, he thinks we can do it. And if we have to split it into, into two different to make it easy to read, we'll, we'll do that.
Yep.
Yeah, but it'll all be there one way or another.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's some basic things of like, yeah, um, and my only thing was, I guess. The animal could, you know, please contact if there are any issues. I felt like that was, well, it is at the very bottom. I'm just wondering if it should be at the top, but I'll leave that to your discretion.
Okay.
Right, if I can, I just, I just thought of an idea. Knowing that we have such a diverse community here in town, and there's so many languages. And realizing there's only so much real estate that we can put on a sign, as far as language, and this is a pretty significant amount of language. I would also just look to see if maybe if there's a way to put a Q R code or something that would direct it to Spanish, Portuguese, you know, whatever the top six or nine languages are in the community. That might be at the website where this could be translated, so people could see.
And maybe to our website, if it's.
Exactly, somewhere on our website. I, I don't know how possible that is, just a suggestion, um, because I know we can't put, you know, six versions of this out there.
Yeah, sure, I'm sure we can look into that now.
Just a thought.
Hmm.
Great. And I know it wasn't in our package here, um, but I think, Kristy, you're looking for us to.
Yeah.
Approve the regulations.
Yeah, so according to the charter, um, the use of town property is under the control of the town manager, but, um, we've been doing some research into. Uh, exactly what this particular piece of the State Hospital property was, um, accepted by. piece of the state hospital property was accepted by town meeting, what the purpose was for. And we haven't located that exactly for this particular spot. So I think it's safest to just have the board vote on them, vote on the regulation.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the regulations as provided?
Move to approve the regulations as presented.
As amended, do we need to make it, should we be as, with changes as discussed?
I think we made suggestions, but yeah.
Suggestions or?
Well, I think you should. So the only one that I heard was to amend it, to say that it's open to everyone.
Right.
Yep, that's what I'm hearing too.
The other one was a suggestion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that's part of the motion.
Yep.
As amended? Yep, as amended. Second.
Yep. Okay. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Roll call vote.
That's right, sorry. It's a roll, roll call vote.
Sean has toes to make. I've made all these mistakes before.
Yeah, me too.
Me too. I'll still make them. Sean?
Kyo, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
And Johnson, yes. Jen, thank you so much.
Thank you, I'm so excited.
Tons of work. Yeah, town's going to be very excited for this, so.
Thank you.
Long time, long time coming.
Sorry, Ian, I jumped the gun on that.
Nope, that's okay.
We don't do enough roll call votes, I guess.
Yeah. He's excited. He wants to be first.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to be first at the dog park.
Item eight on the agenda, naming policy and intent to name cemetery located on Nurse Street.
So this is the, this policy, this is the third meeting. This has come to you with, and this has the amendments from the historical commission from the last meeting. And then there was some discussion. So I provided another version with, with what I believe the board was interested in seeing. So you can see that, you can see that in your packet. And then if you were to approve the policy, then you would state your intent to name the cemetery.
Okay. Anything you want to call? I mean, so what's in here still has some comments on it?
Right. So if you look at E, which I think is on the second page, so what you see in blue was provided by the historical commission. What you see in red on E is, is what I had added based on the last meeting discussion. So that's that all applicants must be reviewed by the historical commission as to the historical nature of the asset and/or the proposed name for the purpose of making a recommendation to the select board. And then that second part of that section is in blue, was provided by the historical commission. And then you can see to the right what, what I deleted, which was specific to the MGL.
Okay. And then there was a suggestion, I think, up under general. And are you proposing we change that at all or?
Oh, yeah. So that was provided by the historical commission. And I think the board, though you didn't take a vote, I think was in agreement with the proposed, except for the language between the dash marks.
Yeah, I think the proposal I made at the, at the last meeting, Ian, was that we changed that to simply state the select board may revoke the name of any town-owned property under their jurisdiction. That's it.
Okay.
Just make it clean.
If extraordinary circumstances arise, they could reflect poorly on the town. However, such decisions must be impartial, free from bias, political influence, or passing trends.
That was the note that I made, but.
So it was the stuff within the dashes.
There was no da, no, no. I actually, my, my, I went back and watched this at the meeting again this afternoon. And my point was just making, we have the authority, you know, and it's up to us to decide those pieces, you know, along the way. Those are all definable by this board or future boards as to what, you know, bias, political influence, et cetera, are. And I don't think we should be bound to just simply those things. I think the board can take that up as part of their discussion, as part of their authority. I just think it's cleaner to just lop off all that language. That was my suggestion.
Patrick, are you okay with it as presented in, not the comments, but as presented?
I'm not sure. When was it presented? Are you saying?
It's in the document right now.
In the document, in our packet?
Let's highlight it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm reading it right now. Sure, I can, I can accept that.
So basically go back to the original language. You're okay with?
Yeah.
What are others thoughts? I'm fine either way, like South, but.
I'm a little confused because I don't have a, I'm not sure if this is a clean copy with comments or if this is a marked up copy. I thought, I thought we had been given two copies, but I only-
In your packet, there's a marked up copy using the track changes.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're referring to right now.
So basically what we're-
So you're proposing leaving, leaving the language under extraordinary circumstances? That would cast a negative image?
Yeah. So basically what's in the comments?
And that was language that you came up with after our last meeting, or was that the language from the original?
No, that was the original language that we proposed to the first meeting.
So we should have just approved it at the last meeting?
Well, no, because there's other changes to discuss on page three, I think.
I see. Okay, I'm sorry. There's a lot of red and blue and different, so I'm just making sure I understand what changed from the last meeting and what is staying.
The only change from the last meeting was the red.
Yeah, okay. And I'm fine with it.
Kristy, am I correct in thinking that a future board, if they so choose, could update this policy in the future?
Anytime. Any board can update the policy at any time.
So, so I think this is-
Good for now.
Good for now, yeah. In regards, if I could, I just, I did have a question about that second change at the bottom, as I read that. And this certainly was the intent of the conversation we had two weeks ago. So I appreciate Kristy putting the work in and whatnot, putting the language here. My only question is, what does the form of the recommendation come as? And what I mean by that is, in the examples that we discussed two weeks ago, I gave the scenario where we could have three names be presented, and they go to the historical commission, they present those three names. My expectation would be that they would have a vote on each one of those names, and that the votes for each one of those names would be presented as the recommendation, as opposed to, you know, I want to know, you know, I don't remember exactly how many people are on that committee, but, you know, if there's five, I want to know if there was a three-two vote on one, and a four-one vote on another, and a five-zero vote on the next one, right? I want to understand that. So I'm just wondering if that level of information is necessary here guidance-wise, or is that just something that we?
I wouldn't put that into a policy, but I would say that's something we would ask for.
Okay.
At the request of what we received from them.
Okay. Just, I'm trying to set expectations as to what they need to come back.
I think my take, again, this is my personal take, is that you don't want to get to that level. I mean, this is similar to what we just did with-
I understand there's a danger of getting too granular.
Too much in a policy, yeah. But I think what we do is then set the rules of what we want to see for that.
So that was my only question. I'm okay with how that is written.
Yeah, I guess if and when that scenario plays out, I don't expect them to vote on all three. I mean, typically you make a motion to recommend one to the select board. And if that passes, then would you then go on to recommend another one to the select board? That doesn't make a huge amount of sense. But what I would prefer to see is not just a recommendation of the vote, or a reporting of the vote, but a why they recommended that. And I'm hoping that we make it clear to them, you know, give us the reasons why you recommended this one name over the other two or four, or however many names there are considered.
If I may?
Actually, Kristy first and then-
Do you think that you would just end the sentence after proposed name, rather than have them be sort of required by this policy to make a recommendation?
Yeah.
So then they would give you information as to the historical nature of the asset or the name, but maybe they wouldn't provide a recommendation?
I, I'm more tend to go towards getting just the facts, not necessarily a recommendation. And if, if the rest of the board here would, wants to get a recommendation, I, Mark, I see where you're headed. But I feel, I feel like this isn't, this isn't like our recent vote with the planning board where we, you know, just, I want that discussion to come forward to us. I want to understand, you could have two or three very viable, you know, historically significant, I would like to understand how that whole committee perceived all, all of those examples, not just have a vote on one. Because as you and I both know, I suspect the board knows, generally speaking, it's one vote more often than not. They don't go through all of them. I'd like to understand that conversation across all of those.
Yeah. So I think to that point, what Kristy proposed, I like, is basically we just, we're not asking them to make a recommendation. We're just asking them to provide us the information on the names, the applications that were there as to the historical nature and the proposed name.
So they become, they become a research function essentially.
Correct. And then they can come to our meeting. But I think to me, that is, while their meetings are posted in public meetings, I think we do get more folks here at our meeting. I think for them, if they want to make a recommendation, I think they come, as any other resident would come, to our meeting.
They would, if they were to make a recommendation, it would fall under that section C, which is applicable to all boards and committees.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So I would propose that we amend it as, well, we'll have to vote on it, but I like that to just, making the period after and under E to just take it, place the period after the word name and remove for the purpose of making a recommendation to the select.
And the rest of that paragraph, I think, isn't really-
Yeah.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yep. Please.
So amend E to read, "All applications must be reviewed by the historical commission as the historical nature of the asset and/or proposed name for the purpose of a period, and such review shall be shared with the select board."
Say that again?
So the first, the first part of the red, "All applications must be reviewed by the historical commission as to the historical nature of the asset and/or proposed name," period, "such review shall be shared with the select board."
Period. Is that the second sentence?
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Second.
So you're, you're eliminating the layer?
Yes.
No, that's not a motion, but we, we would make a motion-
For the whole thing.
Later to approve the whole thing.
Yeah.
Including that language that she just-
Yeah. So let's discussion, what I'll do is say, let's have discussion specifically on that language, if there's any comments.
I'm fine with that language.
I'm fine with what Shelby proposed as well. And I think that there's still a lot of flexibility in, in doing that because of G3. It allows them to come forward and have the discussion as well through that.
Ian, I would just say, let's get this policy out there. We're going to have a guinea pig here to kind of work through. And maybe then, as Patrick suggested, we have the option to revise a policy if we run into hiccups, speed bumps, roadblocks, whatever.
So question is, so just, I want to be cognizant of the historical commission providing their comments. So we're removing what they asked to include. The way I read it, it's kind of like a statement of fact versus, so I'm, I'm almost fine with doing it, but if we, if we kept it in there, it almost put it in parentheses versus having it as a, or just to kind of say that it's-
Yeah. I mean, I didn't have a strong opinion of it, but as I think about it more, I look at it and I say, well, wait a second, no other committee that might also want to have a role in this. We're not stating, this to me is like stating their responsibility within, their general responsibility within a policy. And I don't think it's necessary. I don't think that does any harm to the document. I had some additional information, but that's about it. So I am not strong on it either way.
I'm just curious, when people are proposing a name, are they just proposing a name, or are they giving us why they're proposing that name? And do we want?
That's in our, yeah.
And do we want to fact check that?
Well, I think that's what we're kind of asking a historical.
Right.
Well, they're only going to do it if it's historical in nature.
Well, I think the discussion we had two weeks ago, which Mark, I think, laid out for us, is pretty much any property, I don't care if it's a flagpole to a fire hydrant, but any property under the town is, has a potential for being historical. I was sitting there pondering this, this afternoon, saying, what, you know, I look at the new cemetery and I say, well, that, does that have historical relevance yet? Therefore, is it a historical property? It will be in the future, right? But today, is there, is there, right? I don't know.
Yeah. The point isn't whether the property is historical, it's whether the name is historical. And I want to know if the name that's, the name, names plural, that are being proposed, you know, I am not familiar with every aspect of Westboro history. If somebody proposes chestnut tree junction, right? Are chestnut trees historically, no, you know?
Right. But I think that-
I mean, I don't know.
But that's, but that's how this is written. It's basically that-
Yeah.
All applications must be reviewed as to the historical. So that, they're going to review, basically what we're saying here is they're going to review every application.
Well, that's what I want. I want somebody, and I think the historical commission is the, you know, theoretically the experts on Westboro history.
And that language that we have as amended.
In fact, not theoretically. I think they're more expert than I am on Westboro.
Well, I think, the way I read this is they're reviewing all applications and to the amendment Shelby made than presenting that to the select board. So we'll have that as part of our package.
Yeah.
And if you move back in the document in B, people who submit for this have to provide a certain amount of support for their position. So I see the historical commission validating what's submitted, right, to be, you know, as to whether or not it's accurate and things of that nature, to make sure that-
Sure.
Something's not being pulled over. So I, so I think B covers providing details on the submissions, and then the historical commission helps us support those submissions.
And they'll know if it's not, if someone says, I want it to be the new Westboro cemetery, that may not have historical verification, but they could determine that it does.
Just, just one point of clarity, because Mark makes a really good point about his expectations were around not the property itself. My expectations is it's both.
It says both.
Yeah, guys, it says that.
I know. And that's why I want to make sure, because I'm expecting them to come back and say, yeah, this piece of property has this, and as well as the name that's being submitted, has this relevance. I want to have that confirmation.
Sure, but not every property that we name is going to have historical relevance.
Right, but this whole debate came up on the topic.
In fact, the cemetery site, I don't know if it has historical relevance.
But it may, should be reviewed.
It may, and I'd like to know, because that may influence what I name it, or what we name it. I shouldn't say what I name it.
But to your piece, that we're not, not that we're naming it, but if we decided to name a fire hy, a new fire hydrant, that may not have historical significance.
Right.
Not that I think we're going to be doing that, but.
So I move to approve the naming policy as amended. Second.
Can I just make one comment, given the back and forth we're hearing here? If we took out and/or and just kept it as and, then it covers both the request on the part of the board to review the, the asset as historical, yes, no, and why, and context, as well as the proposed name.
Excellent point, Shelby. I would support that change in the, in the motion.
I am fine with that as well.
As re-amended.
You're okay with it?
Yep, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. We have that in. You got that down?
Are we going to vote on this thing, actually?
Yeah, we are. Can you believe it? And then what, guess what we're going to do next? We're going to kick something off, so I hope. Okay, so we have the motion with the amendments. All those in favor will be a roll call vote. Shelby Marshall. I don't want to call you Marshall. Shelby.
Shelby Marshall, yes.
Silverberg, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Welch, yes.
Johnson, yes. Okay. Second piece of this agenda is intent to name the cemetery located at Nurse Street.
Right. So I actually didn't give you a motion for this, but you would want to vote to your intention to, to name that property per your policy.
So moved. Second.
That all we need to do at this point. Any comments? So this is kicking off that process and we'll get it started.
How, how, how are we going to get it out there? I mean, obviously people watching tonight, but, well, I just want to make sure. Okay, so.
It just says that it has to be publicly posted. We have to put it in the newspaper.
It's all contained. Yep, you're right. It's in the policy.
By our policy.
We just, sorry.
It's under that, under the section process for naming. So basically, we just did, well, we will do A.
I'm good.
So basically, we're moving to name it and that we'll seek nominations for the naming of it, and that we'll publicly post it.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? We had it moved and seconded, right?
Yep.
I think. Okay. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Silverberg, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Welch, yes.
And Johnson, yes. Let the fun begin. Let's get the naming going here. It's going to be good. Great. Okay, next on our agenda is discussion on waste management program. Kristy?
Sure. So including your packet, I provided the board with some information on Harvey's
Harvey's Waste Connections has asked, uh, if the town would be interested in moving to single stream recycling. Right now, we have to separate recycling. So in your packet, I talk about, uh, the cost of that per ton and our concerns around, uh, moving the location, uh, and making, continuing to make changes. And then we got some more information. So, uh, for those of you, uh, who don't know, so, um, essentially, the change that you had approved last time, which was to move the location to the, the, the side of the current facility, is, is working through a, a process with the DEP. Um, and so that actually will take longer than, um, what we had originally anticipated, which was that this would happen during the summer. This change in location would happen during the summer. So, so I'm not asking you to consider anything this evening, uh, just really an update that, um, we're trying to understand the timing of that process, uh, for permitting that new location with DEP. Um, and then at, at that, the point at which we would, we were, were to move locations, we would have to have another conversation with the board about the interest in moving to that single stream recycling. And just, um, for everyone's awareness, the purpose of having that discussion about the single stream is really to improve track, traffic flow, um, at the new location.
Great.
Thank you, Christie. I, I guess, um, I think when we, um, we last discussed this, one of the questions or points that got brought up, uh, was around the tra, the traffic flow we're talking about, I think you're talking about, and they're talking about is inside the harvest facility. There's also, I think there was a concern about the traffic outside as well. So it, how does that get reviewed? How does that, I mean, are there traffic changes that need to be modified? Because they're moving to like another spot. I'm assuming, I think it's another entrance, right? I haven't been down there yet, so. So how does that play into, with the planning board? Is there a role to play? I don't know.
Um, I'm not, I don't know about the, the planning board's role. I think citing the new location for the transfer station kicks off with DEP because that's, that can be a fairly long process. So, um, again, I think there's, there's still a lot of questions. Like, and this will have to come back to the board at a future time. I know that they were planning on two lanes going in, um, and one lane coming out, but I, I can't, I can't really speak to exactly how that would work because obviously that has to, the location has to be approved by DEP.
So it sounds like there's going to be more, I think.
There's a lot more.
Question is valid. I think there's a lot of comments that we need to see, but let's, let the process.
Yeah.
And basically ask for a future meeting agenda to come back as things progress.
And just part of that process, just so everyone's aware, DEP actually has to refer back to the town and the Board of Health has to hold a public hearing. So that's all part of that process.
Perfect.
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry, Fred left, so I, I may be guessing here, but if they apply for some type of permit with, I don't know if they need a building permit. I think you said the, yeah, but if, any kind of permit either with, uh, building or CONCOM may trigger site plan review and then the planning board would get involved, but it, it, it's not up to us to determine what triggers that. It's up to the building commissioner and potentially, uh, conservation.
That's what I didn't understand. Yeah. So more to come, it sounds like, through this process.
So to summarize for now, the, um, the location and the operation will remain, um, as it currently is. And, um, and we'll come back with further information.
If it goes to site, site plan review, they would have to do a presentation here and we would make recommendations to the planning, like we would on any site.
But anyways, more.
But it also has to come back for a contract amendment.
Right.
So.
There's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of pieces that will, will be privy to going forward, so. We'll pay attention, but we'll get on a future agenda. Okay. Any other comments? Shelby, anything on your side? Questions? Okay. Great. We're going to move forward to item 10, uh, personnel policies as related to personal appearance. And we're not going to use any select board members by name. Mark. Only kidding.
He's the new guy.
So the language provided here is a personal appearance policy. We don't currently have a dress code or any other type of personal appearance policy. The reason that we're requesting this right now would be for non-union employees and it'll be incorporated into our personnel policies. Um, and the reason for this timing is that we have negotiated a personal appearance article within the clerical union agreement that has the exact same language as is being proposed here. Um, just wanting to equally apply that across the board.
Great. Are there any questions for Christie on the, this change, which again, as she said, mirrors what has recently been approved, um, by the clerical union, their latest contract?
One thing, I think, um, in many cases, these folks are actually the managers.
Right.
Of, of the other individuals, right?
Largely department heads, yeah.
Yeah, so fair is.
Fair is fair.
Exactly. Right, because for the clerical union, this will go into effect on July 1st, so this is good timing for the non-union folks to, to hear about it. It, it also is not, um, as I said, we didn't previously have a dress code, but it's, it's, um, similar to current practices.
Shelby, any questions on your side?
No, I, I think I'm all set. I mean, I, I think it's consistent with, um, you know, what Christie said, what, what we've already negotiated. Um, I think my only comment would be just, um, you know, I think, I think maintaining a professional environment is important. I also think that, Christie, I would look to you and, and your leadership team to make sure that, um, you know, it, it doesn't become, you know, like a, I can't even imagine it being a barrier to like hire someone or what have you, but just, you know, understanding kind of any culture impacts it might have on us being a favorable employer. Just, you know, continue to watch that and, and seek input. That's all.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the personal appearance policy for non-union staff.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
Mark.
Silverberg, yes.
Kio, yes.
Welch abstains.
And Johnson, yes. So four, zero with one abstention. Great. And we already did 11. We had no inspirational transfers. We covered, uh, item 12 earlier. We covered item 13 earlier. So now we're on item 14, which is town manager's report.
Um, so the upcoming board meetings for the summer, um, we have another meeting on June 24th, also July 22nd and August 12th. Um, so just noting that we are only meeting once, or we're only planning to meet once in July and August.
Do you promise?
No, I don't. Uh, also just noting that, um, beginning yesterday, we changed the hours, uh, at Town Hall in the Forbes Newsville Building so that on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday, the hours are 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM instead of closing at 5:00. This is, uh, maintains, uh, the same workday, but we've actually shortened lunches to one, to a half hour in favor of getting out a half hour earlier. Um, also in July, the senior center will be moving to that, to the same schedule as Town Hall. Um, an update, some folks may have heard, um, the governor had an event last Monday, talking about the Affordable Homes Act and how that applied to, uh, surplus property sort of across the Commonwealth that had been identified by DCAM. So the town did receive notice that pursuant to the Affordable Homes Act, the property located at Zero Lyman Street in Westboro, which is owned by the Commonwealth under the care and control of Department of Mental Health, has been determined to be surplus to the Commonwealth's current foreseeable needs and is made available for disposition. So that property is, um, going to be disposed of by the Commonwealth, but will have a restriction that it has to be used for housing purposes. On Friday, uh, Ian and I met with representatives from DCAM as well as Abain, who's our Affordable Housing Trust Chair, to discuss with them, um, any opportunity the town might have to purchase the property. The intent and the process set up under the Affordable Homes Act is that the, the property is, is, um, it is disposed of through auction, um, and, and would likely therefore be a developer. But we do have an opportunity to provide comment. Um, I will say, under the Affordable Homes Act, I think that they said that, so that when they come in, um, the local zoning does not necessarily apply, um, but it allows them to, uh, do, I think it's four houses per acre. Um, so this would yield 22 units. Um, I guess I shouldn't said houses, four, uh, units.
Can, can I ask a question?
Can I just finish?
Yep, finish.
Um, and so we have the ability to provide comments. So we, uh, we will provide comment. I will actually probably, this will be on an agenda, so you might want to hold your question until the next meeting. It'll be on the agenda on the 24th, so we can review a letter to send, uh, with our comments by the, um, to make the June 27th deadline. I have spoken, this isn't in here, but I have spoken to the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. They have a meeting on Friday, so they're going to put together their own comments and bullet points as to, um, sort of our own affordability goals as well as, uh, highlighting some of the programs that might be available for that parcel.
Yeah, if I could just add on before your comments of being part of that, I think, just to be clear, I, I would, um, recommend that folks look at the Affordable Homes Act. We assume that because it's called Affordable Homes Act, that it was a priority placed on affordability. The priorities paid is, um, according to the act is to sell these properties as quickly as possible for the most money that the state can make on the properties, irregardless, and this is where we ask the question on zoning, and there are some follow-ups we're doing with town council and others, because, I'll just say, I stated in the meeting, it sounds like unfriendly 40B in the sense that it, it kind of supersedes a lot of town zoning. We talked about the fact that we have a zoning requirement for 20% affordability in projects, which the indication we got from the folks from DCAM on the phone was that that would not apply here. And this is, again, goes back to where we want to come back with our comments. They, they indicated they were willing to listen and bring that forward to the head, um, of DCAM, so to their bosses and stuff, but I think it is something, um, for us to pay attention to. But that's just my two cents from discussion that happened in the meeting. But we will put this on a further agenda. There is work that we need to do to get better understanding through attorneys too as to what exactly rules apply and don't apply here.
Right. Um, well, that doesn't answer my question, but, um, relates to my question in the sense that when we, when they last surplus, surplus the property, um, we, the town rezoned that from M1, in that case, it was a senior housing overlay, but is the planning board intending to move forward with some type of, uh, rezoning of that parcel? I think that might be smart and give us.
I don't think they would have time. They're planning to auction in September.
Well, that, that may be true, but a develop, but if we post, uh, if we post a, a public hearing intending to rezone it, any developer would have to follow that zoning if they, um.
Well, I think, this is the question, basically the.
They've told us that zone, local zoning isn't, doesn't apply, so we need to further understand that.
Well, that's what I tried to find. So basically said the affordable.
It's very different from other times that we've worked with DCAM.
I mean, our, our opportunity, basically what came back with and we went through this, but our, only our, our opportunity as a town would be to be one of the bidders at auction if we were interested in controlling the property.
We should probably wait till the next meeting.
Yeah. We, actually, so we haven't. Interested in rezoning the property.
Sorry. I'm going to stop it because this is, I'm a posted agenda item. We're going to put it on, uh, the future agenda to have.
That's fine, and I'm sorry. I just.
No, and I'm sorry that I, I just want to give you kind of what was talked about, but I, I probably went over what I should say too. So we will put it on agenda, have further discussions, but just to note that we are going to be asking for, we need to find out more information too, based on that. Some more to come.
Can, can I just ask, Ian, in that agenda item, can we just make sure we have a link to the Affordable Homes Act so we can read what that is?
Yeah, we, we can get that out.
I mean, I can look it up, but I just want to make sure I get the right information. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, in the Public Works Department, the DPW was awarded $46,300 through the Shared Streets and Spaces Program Grant. The funds will enable the installation of a proper crosswalk and a short stretch of sidewalk at the intersection of West Main and Haywood Drive, the requirement identified in the town's Complete Streets Prioritization Plan. Uh, in conjunction with National Public Works Week, the DPW completed training that included commercial facility grease trap inspections and a review of on-call procedures. Um, part one of the annual golden shovel competition was conducted last week, testing first aid competency, chainsaw use, plow operations and GIS proficiency, and part two will occur on Friday. Representatives from the CONCOM and DEP conducted a site walk with town staff and consultant at the Upton Road-Moor Street intersection relating to the project address, uh, I'm sorry, the project to address issues with a network of 11 culverts. Based on ecological benefits and cost savings, consideration is being given to a proposal that includes removal of a portion of Moore Street. Uh, pavement overlay was completed on Glenn Street. Drain, water and sewer structures are expected to be replaced this week along a section of Milk Street and Oak Street with paving to follow. In the Police Department, a summary of the current grant initiatives of the Police Department is actively pursuing to secure additional funding so the 2025 COPS Hiring Program Grant to fund one additional police officer. 2025 COPS School Violence Prevention Program would fund a mobile command vehicle to bolster school safety. The Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, uh, for, to equip one cruiser with a drone responder kit and another with a mobile command post setup. Uh, the Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness Act Grant, um, we submitted for, but we're not selected. It would have supported officer wellness programs, and then the Municipal Road Safety Grant Program, uh, that's in progress and it funds overtime enforcement, radar gun replacement and PBT acquisition.
Great. Thank you. Okay, item 15 on the agenda is request to approve, uh, meeting minutes of, um, May 20th and May 27th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments, corrections or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll move to a roll call vote. Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
Silverberg, yes.
Kio, yes.
Welch, yes.
And Johnson, yes. It's five to zero, five being present. Okay, next we will go to issues and correspondence of the select board. And I will, Shelby, I'm going to go with you first if, uh, you're ready on the screen.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything prepared for time. I'm sorry, you guys.
No problem.
So I'm going to keep it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mark.
All right, I've got, uh, a few things. Uh, June 15th is the Sheer Joy Chorus, uh, Jewish Community Chorus, at, uh, High Shalom Temple, uh, if anyone's interested in that. We also have, this Thursday, the farmer's market is opening. I believe it starts at 2:00. And that's at Bay State Commons. Tomorrow night is the Downtown Development Plan Meeting, public meeting, uh, where, uh, you'll have a chance to view the preferred alternative for downtown, for the rotary in downtown design and hopefully make some, I'm not sure if public comments will be allowed or not, but we'll find out tomorrow. And if you're not interested in that, uh, Westboro Drums and Strums Jam Out is at the Community Center, uh, from 5:30 to 7:30. That might be more fun for the kids.
Just to note, that meeting is across the street in.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, the downtown.
6:73 at the. At the Great Hall.
I'm sorry. It's technically called Forbes Hall. There's actually a plaque there that says Forbes Hall, but we can call it the Great Hall. I'm going to, until we rename it. No, we can't do that. Sorry. And, uh, remind everyone that next week, uh, on the 18th is the last day of school. It's a half day, so I'm sure you'll see a lot of kids out and about that day, when the weather permitted, so, um, congratulations to them and have a great summer. And then last night, uh, was the public forum. It was my first Community Preservation Committee meeting, uh, as a voting member, uh, representing the Affordable Housing Trust. And, uh, there was a public flooring, forum presenting the, uh, Community Preservation Plan, which means that now we'll be able to start taking applications, um, for interested parties or boards or whoever to be considered for community preservation funding, um, which still has to be approved by town meeting. And one of the things that came up was trying to get more information out to people attending, um, various organizations, whether it be leagues or the civic club or what have you, and, um, I was hoping that we had a bagel, if we have a bagel with the board. was hoping that we had a bagel, if we have a bagel with the board scheduled, that I could do that and present to the seniors. And then there was also...
Let's discuss, because we have one coming up next Tuesday.
Okay, and then there's also was a desire to be on Westboro TV on the 11581 if Shelby has an open agenda for that.
On what date?
Whatever day works for your schedule, Shelby. I think Jim Ball would probably, I don't know.
Okay, I'll follow up with Jim.
And maybe Julia, their co-chair, so.
Yep, yep.
Just the more information we can get out about that, the better.
Yep.
I'm just starting with that here. So I think that's everything I have.
Great. Sean.
I would like to congratulate all our graduating seniors. Very successful day on May 31st, and I want to thank everybody involved with Project Graduation. It's my understanding it was a very successful event that evening. So thank you to all of them for their hard work supporting that over the past few decades. And really, that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Patrick.
Yeah, just, I guess, a couple of quick comments. One was on the CPC, briefly talking to Jim Ball after the meeting. One of the things that they're going to do is come up with a more clear timeline as to when they're, the committee, I think, is planning on getting submissions right now. They said September, but I think their intent is to have those submissions by their meeting in September, so he's going to provide that as part of the information as well. I just wanted to make sure Mark was aware of that as well. I just wanted to share with the community that I went to the temporary library, fantastic. They did a great job setting that up. It's beautiful inside there, so great job to the whole team. And also, I just wanted to let everybody know that the EV team has begun planning for the EV Expo. I'm unaware of what the date is yet, but that planning just began. Their next meeting is on the 17th, so progress being made there. That's all I had.
Great. Thanks. I said a couple of things. So we did have our monthly finance team meeting beginning of the month. Basically spent the time talking about the, our relook at our comparison communities. So we had a good conversation and looked at a bunch of work that John Steinberg had kind of coordinated with help from, from many others, but went through that list, had a discussion on that, and we'll have further follow-up on that moving forward to share. But that was really the, the point of that meeting was really to look at that analysis on what might be recommendations for changes in those comparison communities that we use across the schools, town, whatever we talk about in town meeting and a host of other places. Some more to come there. Also, just an update, did want to thank the community for another success, and the Veterans' Advisory Board for another successful Memorial Day Parade. It was a great day and just great to see the number of people that were here for that. So just wanted to, again, echo thank you for that event. And then kind of liaison update for trust, or actually, as a member update to the Trustees of Soldiers Memorial, as the Chair of the, of this board, that we did actually unfortunately have two recent resignations from the Trustees of Soldiers Memorial. One was the non-veteran and a veteran, so Brian Corcoran and John Gallinari both submitted their resignations. And work with Kristi and to look at what our rules were in terms of replacing it and basically for Trustees of Soldiers Memorial, the vacancies occurring shall be filled by the remaining members for the, on expired terms. So I wasn't sure whether that would be something that would come in front of this board or not, but just something that we will work and I'll work through with the Chair of that board.
Ian, just a quick question on that. Remind me, is that, that's a five members?
Six.
That's right, six. So now it's down to four, so it's an even number. It's always been an even number. It's come in one of those oddities.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So Ian, if there were individuals interested in applying, how would they reach out to let that committee know?
I would recommend that they go through the same process and let our office know, and then we can forward the names to the committee.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and those are all elected seats, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so no member of another elected board could serve in the, serve in those seats?
Correct.
Right.
Is that right? Okay, thank you.
Don't worry, I wasn't.
No, I mean, just, just to note, I serve that by law that I serve as a chair of, but yeah, as an elected, but that's the only one.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll keep folks updated on that as well, but thank you, Shelby. We will post that as openings for committees on that. And again, a non-veteran and a veteran member there. Okay, that is all that I had. Last chance, anything from the board on open comments? If not, a motion to go into executive session? I believe we're hitting all of these, is that correct?
Yeah.
Is there anybody that wants to...
Do you want me to...
You want to do it? You have in front of you, Shelby?
I do have the agenda, I just was going to ask how many?
All of them.
All of them.
All of them? All right, I do. Just, let me, I'm just scrolling here, sorry.
Just to note, I'll make a note that this will be entering to executive session. I want to thank Westboro TV because we always forget in front of that, and we will note that the executive session will be the end of our meeting. We will not be going, coming back into open session. But I would entertain the motion whenever you are ready.
Okay, I am ready. Okay. I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2183 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media MA LLC. Worcester Superior Court CA Number 2285 CV 01281, if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court Case Number 19TL 000768, if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation RE Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro at All, US District Court CA Number 4:23 CV 12017-MRG, if the town declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court Case Number 23-40709, if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2186, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 231 Turnpike Road, 10 and 12 Mill Road, 20 Phillips Street, if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2187, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes on May 27, 2025.
Great. And I declared that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating and negotiating positions. And look for a second, second, one second. And as I noted before, we will not be convening an open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call vote, Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
Mark.
Silverberg, yes.
Kio, yes. Welch, yes.
And Johnson, yes. We are closing open session and moving into executive session.